2013, wish you all a happy new year. We'll go ahead and we'll go ahead and start with a fly salute if you please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Being the beginning of the new year, I thought we'd have a little bit of an introduction. I was trying to do this, having that successful at the beginning of each month, but at least I'm going to do it at the beginning of this year to have a group perform. It's a vocal presentation by the Barbershop Quartet Tonsorial Four. And when they told me that's the name of their group, I immediately looked for definitions, and I found out it had nothing to do with tonsils. It has to do with something associated with barbers. And this is a barbershop quartet.
But they all have hair.
They have hair. Yeah, there you go.
To different degrees, you all have hair. And I'm going to go ahead and invite you forward. Come up and introduce yourself briefly. Some of us, we're going to probably walk around and watch you from the other side.
Okay, fabulous. The View One in Peru, I guarantee you.
All right, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are honored to be here representing our local community. We are the Tonsorial Four. To my left is Ken Henry. He is the tenor of our quartet. I'm Nathan Holmes. I am our lead. This is Steve Hurst, who is our bass substituting for our 80-year-old bass Nathan Mitz, who is at Disneyland celebrating his 80th birthday. And this is Jack Scruggs, our baritone. And so we have been part of the Oregon Trail Pitchpipers Chorus in Canby for about three years, and then the chorus has been in existence since 1965. We are a regional chorus that represents about 19 different zip codes, guys coming from all over our local community. On each one of your chairs, we have flyers for our upcoming show. This is our annual event that we do to support our community. We want to reach out and share the blessing of incredible harmony and music with those around us. To do that better, we applied for a grant, and we recently received the Oregon's and Clackamas County Cultural Trust grant to go through into our schools in Gladstone, Oregon City, and Canby with the Get America Singing Program, which introduces family and heritage music that's distinctly and uniquely American. So we are excited about that opportunity in 2013, and we're going to be entering into the schools to present this music. So without further ado, I'll let Jack introduce our first piece.
Our first number is often thought of as a patriotic song, and while it indeed is that in a sense, it was actually written by Irving Berlin, who went to Germany and England and France in 1937, and was so shocked by what he'd saw about the coming conflict there that he came back and he wrote a song that asked for divine providence, if nothing else. And so he wrote it not as a patriotic song, but as a prayer.
(music) While the storm clouds gather far across the sea, let us wear allegiance to a land that's free. Let us all be grateful for a land so fair. As we raise our voices in a solemn prayer. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans wide with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. My home, my home. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans wide with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
One of the pleasures of coming here tonight is to sing to a local government. We're very proud of our local governments here. There's one more government that's actually one step down, but probably a little more important, and that's the, we're going to sing a song in honor of the most important government of all, perhaps in small communities like this, and that's the family, as we sing our next song.
When there's love at home.
Thank you.
(music) There is beauty all around when there's love at home. There is joy in every sound when there's love at home. Peace and plenty here abide, smiling sweet on every side. Time to softly, sweetly glide when there's love at home. Love at home, love at home. Time to softly, sweetly glide when there's love at home. Happiness we all can share when there's love at home. Every morn does bright and fair when there's love at home. Keep us warm each passing day, safe from harm and hate, we say. Heaven's just one step away when there's love at home. Love at home, love at home. Heaven's just one step away when there's love at home. When there's love at home, love at home.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was very good. In a moment, we're going to have our municipal judge come in. Carol Polly unfortunately is ill today, and she'll be sworn in at a subsequent one. So all of those who just came to hear her sworn in, you don't want to, I don't want to hang around for Rocky's swearing event, you won't leave. Anyway.
There you go.
What I wanted to say, I thought love at home was rather appropriate. I'm not sure there's love among us commissioners, but the whole time I've served on the Oregon City Commission, I can't think of any time where there wasn't mutual respect. And I think it's, I think it's been a credit to, to our commissions, and at least in the period I've known, that that's been the case. And I just wanted to let you know that was the case, but also thank all of us here for that respect that we do show each other. And with that, we're going to have the honor of swearing in Commissioner Smith to be a commissioner.
Again.
Again, yes.
This part I like. Okay, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Rocky Smith Jr.
I, Rocky Smith Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Of city commissioner of Oregon City.
Of city commissioner of Oregon City.
During my incumbency thereof.
During my incumbency thereof.
I don't know, I grabbed this and I didn't expect to say anything, so I guess I will just thank, oh my gosh. Hi Jeff. Sorry. I wanted to thank just a couple people. I have two good friends of mine that are here tonight, who were essentially my entire, without, well, in addition to myself, were my entire campaign committee, which is my friend Holly Swager and William Becker in the back. Holly especially worked a huge amount to help me over the last few months while I was not only running a campaign, but running a huge fundraiser for the Elks Lodge in Milwaukee, and working full-time, et cetera. And so I really appreciate her help. And when Holly couldn't do something and I needed help, William definitely helped step in and fill that, that gap. My parents are here tonight, Rocky and Angela Smith. I want to thank them. They have been a huge support, my family's been a huge support my entire life, and when I decided to rerun again, I was getting a lot of different advice from people. And the advice from my family went from, what do you, why are you, why would you think about even doing this again? Are you crazy? To, well, of course you're going to run again, to why aren't you running for mayor? That was the pretty much extent of all of the things. So I, I quite honestly, towards the end of making a decision to run again, it was one of the hardest decisions I've had to make. And I figured that the easiest thing was to let the people decide, and I was really going to be happy either way. And so I, I'm, you know, excited about the next four years, and I think a lot of great things are going to come to Oregon City. My grandmother's here tonight, and I appreciate her help. I think she went walking all around town too, and she's always been there supporting me on a lot of different things. So thank you, everyone, and I look forward to another four years.
One of the positions we have on the commission is the president, who takes, who takes the responsibility of the mayor when the mayor is not able to function. And we're, we're going to proceed with nominations for the position of, of the council president, commission president, excuse me, and entertain a motion for anybody as to whom that might be.
I was going to make a motion, but I need, I guess I need to make it before someone seconds it, right? I move to appoint Kathy Roth as commission president for 2013.
I hear a second.
I'll second.
With that, we have a motion and a second, and I guess we go through our, we do all these things, we don't say, we don't say anything anymore. We just push buttons.
Oh, it's not a fair, oh, yes it is.
She knows, she got an abstain there. We're waiting for the votes to come up, they're going to come up on the screen, and there they are, with the three, three votes in favor and Kathy Roth abstaining. So congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
And it is, it is an official position, so she will also be sworn in into that position.
Oh, tonight?
Yes, to them.
I didn't wear my bling.
You gotta wear your scarf.
Well, I think that counted as bling. I agree. All right, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Kathy Roth.
I, Kathy Roth.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
The duties of commission president.
The duties of commission president.
Of Oregon City.
Of Oregon City.
During my incumbency thereof.
During my incumbency thereof.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. Oh, I don't have anything to say.
Page.
Say thank you.
Oh, thank you. There we go.
Don't forget your bling.
Yes.
Do we switch seats now?
No. You get to sit here now.
Yeah, you can switch it. You're now a hazard.
Yeah, switch to computers.
Okay, well, for, I don't know, do we have to move yet?
No.
We'll wait till next time. Because we have our.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
I can sit by that one more night, I guess.
Yeah.
We have various committees that we have appointments to, of members of the commission to. C4, I'm reappointing Commissioner, Commissioner Mum. The Metro Policy Advisory Committee will, I will be taking that position. Again, Kathy Roth will be, be my alternate. And I forgot to write these down. Who were the other positions we had? Do I have it on the sheet?
Right. Sorry.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Yeah, so there, South Fork, our South Fork, South Fork Water Treatment Plant has its own board, but it's owned by the city of Oregon City and West Lynn. And the specific bylaws that regulate that is that we have three members from each of the respective councils that serve on it. And I'm making the appointments of myself, Betty Mum, and Commissioner Smith to be reappointed to the positions on South Fork. The Regional Wastewater Advisory Committee, I serve on that. Our wastewater facility, since I think probably mid-eighties or something, has actually been run by the county. It's not a city facility. It used to be, but it, but since, since we went through a moratorium on wastewater, the, the three cities have, had operated under the tri-cities, and now we have an expanded plant that involves more of that. I serve on the advisory committee. My experience there hasn't been very good. They don't, they don't tend to receive our advice. They tend to tell us what they are going to do. So it doesn't quite function that way. Main Street Oregon City Board, Carol Polly will be serving on that. Well, I'm at Fair, Well, I'm at Falls Heritage Coalition. I'm reassigning Eric Underwood to serve at that position. I'll be the alternate there. And the Oregon City Tourism Council, Rocky Smith Jr. will, will be serving on that. These are, these are reappointments, but fortunately have experience for, for a two-year period, which is actually very beneficial for these particular positions. There is a benefit for getting people reelected, because everybody's sort of up to snuff on what we do and so forth. With that, we'll go on into the general citizen comments. This will be three minutes. Anybody wants to speak on any topics, you can come up. There are topics that are not on the agenda, and I'll just look to see if we've had, we've got two people signed up, Bob LaSalle and Dan Fowler. You both come forward and speak in that order. Oh, Bob?
Hi. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Bob LaSalle, and I'm a citizen of Oregon City. At the October 1st CIC meeting, I brought up the issue of the city not providing liability insurance to the officers of the neighborhood associations. In Park Place, we've lost one valuable officer for that reason. And when he realized that he didn't have any coverage, he, excuse me, he resigned immediately to not jeopardize his personal assets. Another association member, or officer, is getting out of the Park Place Association for that reason, also at the end of his term. So it's a real problem. At the October 1st meeting, Katie Riggs told us she'd bring it up to the city manager. At the CIC meeting of November 5th, Katie told us the city attorney was working on the issue. At the CIC meeting of December 3rd, Katie read us a letter from the city attorney's office in regard to the insurance issue, which had statements such as thorny issue, not official organs of the city, increased costs, and decreased independence of the neighborhood associations. It also stated that this issue will be on your work session of January 8th. At this time, I'd like to review some fiscal issues that have been brought up in the last few months that could affect this issue. At the September 5th commission meeting, Mr. Frazier stated the financial condition of the city allowed each person in Oregon City to have an equity of $174. There was no debt, and the city ran on a cash basis. However, he also stated to please not come to city hall to get your check. At the September 11th city commission meeting, Mr. Frazier announced the workers' compensation insurance proposal had decreased for the sixth year in a row. At the October 3rd city commission meeting, Mr. Frazier recognized the members of the safety committee and city workers, and explained that the city workers' compensation cost had been reduced by $86,000. Since the city encourages, if not mandates, those neighborhood associations and the elected officials of those neighborhood associations are performing a valuable service to the city, I ask that this issue be given serious discussion at your January 8th work session. I hope that the city attorneys and/or the city manager will have costs such as coverage, alternative plans or options, as well as the pros and cons of each. In closing, this affects all the neighborhood associations. We're all volunteers. There's not much we get out of it except the feeling of doing good for the community and our neighbors. We've just got to, go ahead. Don't let the attorneys simply tell you how or why it can't be done, but task them with figuring out how it can be done. If the objection is raised that no other cities provide that coverage, all I can say is someone had to eat the first oyster. Thanks for, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
You bet.
We will, we will be discussing that in our work session. Dan.
Couple other people are going to speak. We're going to do this pretty quick, yeah.
When you, be sure to introduce yourselves individually.
Yeah. Dan Fowler, Oregon City, and Gail Yazzalino and Daniel Callen are also with me here. We wanted to take just a moment and give you.
Sure, well, give a title to Daniel, I think. And, and, all three of you.
I'll let you guys introduce your titles. Daniel Callen, Executive Director of Tourism for Clackamas County.
Gail Yazzalino, Administrative Director for Clackamas Heritage Partners.
Thank you. Yeah. We wanted to thank the commission first off for giving us the chance to move again and do some work down at the end of the Oregon Trail here a few months back. And we, we have sending reports to Scott and to the Parks Department, and I think you've received many of those, but we wanted to come back in person and give you a quick update on what's going on. First, we wanted to report that we've expanded our board. We now include Commissioner Smith from the city and Carol Strom, the school board member from the city school district here in Oregon City. Both really have been positive and very valuable additions to the board, and we thank them both. Second, we've been continuing to work with city staff through Denise and Scott and many of the other people here at the city to continue to address the maintenance issues there, and both the short-term and then some long-term issues that we're dealing with. And appreciate all the work and cooperation that the city has given us in that, in that regard. Third, and I really appreciate Commissioner Roth, your challenge when we were doing this in the beginning was to reconnect with the Native American community. It was one of the biggest challenges you gave us. And Gail will add some more detail to that effort, but that has been done, and it's, it's very positive. And we're really excited about some things that we're working on with them. And just at our last board, our last meeting we had last week, and Rocky was there, I think we were all moved when Siobhan Taylor from the Grand Ron Confederate, of the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron said, we see it, we are so excited about reconnecting and being here because we see ourselves as the first welcoming, people who welcome visitors, and they were here at the visitor. And it was a perspective to get in through their eyes to see how they viewed their, their participation and their presence. So, and there's a few more things that Gail will share that are very positive in that regard.
Maybe you should take a lesson from that, Dan. They'll look what happened to them when they welcomed people. You might want to be careful.
We want a better rebuild, yeah. But, so I'll stop there. Those are three things, and if there's anything else to add, I will, but I want to introduce Gail to give you a little more detail.
Okay, a new setting of the clock, please.
So I just wanted to, yeah, what do I want to do? Update you on the progress. I'm just thrilled with the progress that we've had since we've been blessed with our license to operate. So we've been working really closely with all of our partners, the city, the county tourism, the state tourism, and the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron. And we've had two significant meetings with partners, and we've all identified how the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center and Visitor Information Center is important to all of us. And that was huge, and how we're all committed to the success and sustainability of our programming and all of our efforts. So just a brief update on some of the progress with the grants. So the visitor center enhancements are complete. The hoops have been painted, so that's complete. We're working right now pretty closely with Janine Brishers and other staff members at TDC, and then of course, Travel Oregon for the 24-hour, seven signage. But the most significant work that we've done in the last couple of months is to work with the staff and tribal members at the Confederate. with the staff and tribal members at the Confederate Tribes. We've had several meetings, and we are integrating the whole history on all of the grounds, including tourism information. So, for the 24/7, we'll have QR codes and state maps and county maps and city maps, but we'll also be able to, with our grant dollars, help the Confederate Tribes with the structure of signage, and they'll provide the maps. Inside the wagons, they were working on parallel history. We've almost completed the middle wagon with PowerPoint and upgrading and the Bound for Oregon. We're working on, like I said, parallel history, interactive, chaos, just trying to stretch those dollars that we've started with to make it more of an attraction that will keep the visitors coming. Our numbers are up. Well, let's see, we have over 15,000 for this last year, so I forget. That's like almost 38% increase because people are excited about our programming.
Let me just add, before your time runs out, two quick things. On the signage, one thing that we're doing for the Native American community, and they're designing the content, but we have the nine signs?
Yeah. Well, we might rework this now because... Okay, because it's a welcoming, so they have lots of ideas, and we're gonna budget it out, so we may not be totally set on that.
They're working on some signage that will parallel some of the stories now. On the interior, when she says "parallel history", what that is, is they want to tell, to take the period of time that is depicted in the Interpretive Center and tell their story, tell their history in that same timeframe that the Oregon Trail story is told. And so it becomes an understanding of what they were going through, at the same time there's an understanding of what the people traveling the trail were going through. So, anyway.
I have a lot more to say.
Oh, yeah.
Come see me.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Danielle Cowan, and I'm here on behalf of the End of the Oregon Trail, and I appreciate the partnership that we've had with both you across the table from me and the folks to my right around behind me. I know there's people back there as well. When I got engaged with the center a couple of years ago, two and a half years ago, things were quite in disarray, and it's just been an amazing process that we've gone through, and these two, as well as you, have gone through to really make something happen at that center. And, you know, one of the requirements for us was that we retain the Visitor Information Center component. And I appreciate the fact that the Clackamas Heritage Partners and the city worked together to bring that asset back, and that we have now a wonderful little mini-museum, and it actually gets the best reviews of probably any of our other visitor information centers because our hands-on things is very interesting for our visitors, and it really is what draws people in. One of the disappointments for us has been is that it hasn't... We haven't quite finished the rest of the asset development, which is really key, and I know is central to your plans as well as to what Dan and Gail and others have been working on. So, we're very excited about that. It is a tourism asset. It's a state welcome center, and it needs to be more than an empty building greeting people with some cracks and some grass grown out of it. So that doesn't set the living room very well for our community or for our county, so I really am excited about the changes and the investment and so forth that have allowed us to get to where we are, and what sounds like very close to an even brighter future. So I just want to say thank you, and that we're here to support and continue. And I have a minute and 20 seconds.
Danielle, first of all, I want to thank all three of you, but Danielle, I want to compliment the county and its commitment to our visitor center here. I know you were going through some hard decisions earlier on, what you were going to keep and what you were not going to keep, and recognize the true future benefit that we would have for the whole county in terms of looking at maybe ultimately the agro-business that exists adjacent to us and the resources that we have, and I really appreciate the county's commitment to that effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are.
Can I say something? I'm having a hard time staying dry-eyed here. I am just really overwhelmed. I really want to thank you guys for including this Native American counterpart and the parallel timelines. I just... I'm almost speechless. Thank you.
And Siobhan wanted to be here. So bad tonight, but they have the tribal council tonight, and she couldn't because to hear... And Rocky heard it. I mean, to hear the excitement in her voice, it was moving.
Another reason I'm totally shocked is we had some of the tribe at our house last night, and nobody mentioned a word.
I'd like to invite all of you to come down and have your say and figure out, you know, add your critiquing for our programming, because that's gonna be a community effort, too.
We'll report more, and we'll come back. We're happy to come back. We'd like to have the state come back with us and the Confederate tribe come back, and so you hear their words, not just our words about their words.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We don't have anybody on the floor. I'm gonna take this opportunity, though, rather than do this under my report, since some people have left already. We mentioned it last time, but on Tuesday, January 15th, from 5:00 to 7:00, they're going to have an open house dealing with the Oregon Passenger Rail System from Eugene to Portland. They're looking at the potential routes that that might take, and of course, that's extremely important to us. Anybody's invited to come into that open house and make comments. Again, it's at the Pioneer Center, Tuesday, January 15th, from 5:00 to 7:00. Now, if you can't make that particular one, there'll be two others in the metro region, and I'll just announce those as well. Wednesday, January 9th, at the Monoma County Building, same time block, 5:00 to 7:00. And also one in Tooleton on January 10th, 5:00 to 7:00, at the Tooleton Police Department. Anybody that has ideas or simply wants to see what they're looking, I think about a total of four, well, I guess five, including one they're not really gonna consider, but they're trying to appease Washington County. Five different routes that are being looked at, and four of those can perhaps be combined in certain ways. So, this is a great time for people in this community to press for our interest in having that passenger rail service continue here in Oregon City. I think it's rather critical, particularly in terms of the tourism piece that we've just had a discussion about. With that, we'll go on into the regular agenda. We have here in general business the first and second reading of ordinance extending the franchise granted to Portland General Electric Company. And the staff report is being presented by... Is being presented by... Well, we're gonna leave you to the city manager, I reckon. Nancy I. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, and congratulations, Rocky.
Thank you.
We have been... The city has been diligently working with PGE for the last six months or so to develop a new 20-year agreement, franchise agreement. However, we are just not quite finished, and unfortunately, the expiration of the previous one expired on December 31st, and we are requesting an extension for three months to finish up the negotiations. We've gotten through everything except, I think, one final item that we're working on, and because it was recommended that we do this by ordinance, because of the nature of the timing here, we are asking you to approve it unanimously for first and second readings this evening. And if you have any questions regarding that, I will give it a shot at answering, but that's the purpose for tonight's ordinance.
And just to understand, we're extending the current franchise agreement to make sure we have a franchise agreement while we're doing these negotiations.
That's correct.
I'm trying to get out of here, and I'm not being... There we go. And there, I went to the wrong place altogether. Anyway, did somebody want to actually speak to this? I wanted to make one comment before we go into it. This is an emergency ordinance, and normally what happens, we have a first reading at one commission meeting and a second reading at another commission meeting. If an emergency is declared, we go ahead, and if you have a unanimous decision at the first reading at a commission meeting, we can go on to the second reading. Otherwise, we would not be able to. And who's on? Anybody?
Kathy Roth.
I just...
Oh, it's already been passed.
It's already been passed. We passed. We're on.
Please state it.
I don't think I pushed the button.
Do you want me to move? Okay. I move to approve the first and second readings of the ordinance 13-1001, extending the franchise granted to Portland General Electric Company and declaring an emergency.
Second. Does she need to do one at a time?
Typically. Typically, it's first reading and then second reading, and, you know, we can either amend the motion to do first, or we can first and second.
Yeah, so you're moving for the first reading.
First reading.
Okay, and we'll have the reading?
Ordinance number 13-1001, an ordinance extending the franchise granted to Portland General Electric Company and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Can we have the vote, please?
Okay, I've been waiting for a moment. There we go. Okay. And the motion passes unanimously?
Unanimously. I hear a motion for the second reading, please.
Yes, same motion.
Same motion? Read again, if necessary.
Ordinance 13-1001, for the second reading, extending the franchise granted to Portland General Electric Company and declaring an emergency.
Second and final reading?
Yes.
Ordinance number 13-1001, ordinance extending the franchise granted to Portland General Electric Company and declaring an emergency.
A lot of people were pushing their yays before he finished reading.
And the motion is approved unanimously.
Very good. All right.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll go on to the second item, which is a award of Rivercrest Restroom Design Contract to build to Emmerich Construction Company. Get a staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor, and happy new year. We are... I'll give you a little bit of background first, and then I have a couple of housekeeping items for the attachments to this agenda. We were awarded a grant in the amount of $150,000 from the local government grant with Oregon Parks and Recreation, the State Department. In connection with that, we're using $150,000 in SDC park funds, and we did place an RFP out for design-build format. We received five proposals, and of those five proposals through our review committee, Emmerich was unanimously voted highest. So we are recommending that Emmerich be granted this award. They would start this process if this contract is awarded to them this month, and we are proposed to finish before June 1st, because it's attached to our spray park. So we're trying to quickly get this constructed and finished before the summer hits, and we still would not miss the summer with needing those facilities.
Absolutely.
Unfortunately, we had an inadvertent omission of the proposal in Exhibit A, so it does need to be submitted formally to the commission. You did receive those through Nancy I. Thank you very much for sending that out, Nancy. So those are attached, and they are viewable on your machines tonight. The other housekeeping item is we attached a personal services contract versus our standard construction contract. So the contract award would be for the same amount of $299... So the contract amount would not change, just our standard format of the contract would change slightly. And if Bill would like to kind of give the difference of that?
Sure. Mayor and Commissioners, basically, there are two types of public contracts. One is personal services, one is construction, and the statutes require certain things out of the construction contracts that aren't required in the personal services. So we have form contracts that incorporate everything, and what we do is just use a different form. So you've seen the construction contract form before, and we'd just be using that.
So there's nothing that precludes us from proceeding on this?
You can authorize the staff to enter into the contract using the standard form.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those tonight.
Do I hear a motion? Or do we need some additional discussion?
Go ahead, Hope. Hold on. Commissioner Roth, can you state the motion for the record?
I would like to move that we award 13-006, award the Rivercrest Restroom Design Building Contract to Emmerich Construction Company.
Second.
It's moved and seconded? Unanimously approved.
Woo-hoo! Thank you. We're excited. It's gonna be up and ready for summer.
Okay, with that, going on down to the final item on our general business, amendments to a personal service contract for design and construction for the 2012 and 2013 annual paving program.
Thank you, Mayor and City Commission. Hopefully you'll be a little patient with me. This is an item that we would typically put on the consent agenda, but in discussion with David, we thought maybe it would be a good time to bring that forward, because there's several pieces to this that both you will be interested in, and I think the public will be interested in. So I just wanted to go through that, and also, as a new department head, I just want to make sure I'm giving you enough information, but not too much, so.
Good job.
I appreciate that.
Wait a minute. Not too much? What are you trying to...
Sometimes less is more, right? But not all the time, so.
Less is more. That's right.
So I just really wanted to give you some insight into how we sometimes let contracts and amend those contracts through kind of the process of learning bits and pieces of the work and trying to let those contracts and contract amendments as we know more about the work. So, and this particular project, by the way, is funded using your pavement maintenance utility fees. So it's a well-received program. It's something that we're doing every year. This particular year, we chose to select a consultant that would work over the 2012 season and 2013 season. The idea there is there's some efficiencies in trying to use that same consultant, so that, you know, maybe what he learns in the first year, he'll carry forward into the second year, or some of the efficiencies that we might find with some of the pieces that go along with that work, we'll carry that through at least a two-year period. Sometimes we extend those longer, but in this case, we're talking a two-year contract. We... You actually initially took action to sign the first contract, which was for $198,736. We've yet to spend $76,315 of that. That was for the 2013 work, which we're still holding on to. We selected this consultant as... He's one of the consultants, or this firm is one of the firms that's on our shortlist of consultants that we went through a selection process. We selected them based on qualifications, and with the new Oregon laws regarding professional services, we select that consultant based on qualifications, and then we negotiate a price with that consultant to do the work. So that's what we did under the original contract. And as a piece of that, when we made that decision, we also let you know that we would be bringing amendments before the city commission or before the city manager, depending on the dollar amount, as that work needed to be approved. So, so far, two amendments have been approved, and the city manager has approved both of those. The first one was for some additional design work that we decided we wanted them to do for Barclay Hills Drive, Beaver Creek Road, and Malala Avenue. Now, the Barclay Hills Drive work is... It was completed, and the Beaver Creek Road and Malala... Malala is yet to be completed, but it'll be something that we'll look at completing in 2013. So that—for the most part—that design work is complete. The Phase Two Amendment Number—or the Phase One Amendment Number Two was for some post and pre-construction surveying. This is another thing that wasn't completely identified in the first phase, because we wanted to make sure we were clear on how much of that kind of work we needed, so.
Excuse me, John. What page are you on? Where are you at?
I'm on the staff report.
Okay.
I'm just reading through the staff report. So that, combined with construction inspection, we wanted to wait to make sure we were fully understanding all the scope of work that we felt needed, and we also wanted to understand what our own staff commitments were. So we typically like to amend that contract to include construction services after we already—you know, once we know those answers. So that's—that was amendment number two. Amendment number three, which is included in this packet, it's also an amendment that David could sign, and as indicated, he's willing to sign, but it's for some additional construction services that we needed to complete the 2012 projects. And I would say most of this is related to some of the problems we had with this particular contractor. If you remember, I talked to you a little bit about this in David's city manager report a couple of meetings ago, where we were having some quality work issues. Definitely, the weather window was—we were uptight against the weather window, so we eliminated three street projects from the 2012 list, and our plan is to carry those forward in 2013. But there was—some of those quality work issues really took a fair amount of more consultant time to develop the punch list, hold the contractor's hand, and get them through that, and develop kind of some warranty work lists for them as well. So that's what the $18,775 is for. And amendment number four, which is more than the city manager's signing authority, and one—the reason why it's on your agenda tonight is for really the—a variety of more design-based services. So more surveying services, more utility coordination services, more design services. And in the 2012 work, we actually hired a different consultant to do the pavement analysis, which is kind of tells us how thick the road should be, you know, how much reconstruction work we should do. We hired them directly, and in this year, we're just going to incorporate that into their contract as well. Same firm, but there'll be a subconsultant, so that work is included in here as well. So that's a $96,406 contract, and that brings our total for the two years to $420,141. And we're asking you for a decision on that tonight. We think this is the most informed way to administer our construction contracts, at least this particular kind of contract. And again, we think it's a great use of your pavement maintenance utility fee. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we would—
Can I ask a really basic question?
Sure.
Some of these streets that we're talking about here are so curved up. Is some of that going to be flattened out in areas that you're doing this stuff with?
The new ones, or the 2012 projects? Are you thinking more—
Either one.
Okay. Well, some of those, we have the option of often raising the pavements, right?
Okay.
If there's no curbs, no gutters, it's pretty easy to just raise the pavement. We might have to do some grading at the driveways and things like that. But in those areas where we have—we don't—where we have curbs and gutters, we're kind of controlled at that unless we want to replace those curbs and gutters, or unless we want to really dig deep and reconstruct the whole thing. And what we find is our pavement analysis tells us what we really need is more asphalt thickness to create enough section there for really heavy bus traffic, heavy truck traffic. That—a lot of that traffic—the size of the vehicles today aren't what they used to be. So the most cost-effective way of dealing with this is sometimes just adding to that road section. So sometimes what we're doing is we're trying to match near the curb and gutter, because we can't pave on top of the gutter line, if you will. We have to match there. But we try to transition up and raise it more in the center where most of the traffic, vehicle traffic is at. Now, sometimes that's, you know, extreme, and we look at that and don't want to—we try not to add too much crown to the road, but in some cases, especially in a lot of the older parts of town, you know, you just see a lot of crown. You'll see a lot of cross slope, depending on how that, you know, road was designed. And unless we, you know, want to spend the money to reconstruct the boulevard, we're kind of struck—we're kind of stuck with those conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I got a feeling my street's been raised—
Yeah.
On the gutter side, and I've got about a half inch of curb left, so.
Yeah. We do a lot of milling and paving in a lot of our projects, but sometimes we just do overlays.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So since it is not on the consent agenda, do I hear a motion? Or do I see one?
What happened?
Motion's been made by Kathy Roth and seconded by Betty Ma.
Can she state the motion for the—
Yeah, if you'd say it for us.
Boy, I don't remember doing this one. 13-008, amendment to a personal services agreement for design and consulting services for 2012 and 2013. Is that what I'm supposed to—okay. Annual paving program.
Vote, please. Seconded by Betty Ma. It was a unanimous vote. Thank you. What I failed to do was to ask approval of the agenda. I'll ask for approval of the agenda this time, and if there's anything anybody wants to pull from the consent agenda.
Your name is just popping in there, Kathy, tonight.
My name's in there again?
Yeah.
I didn't do anything.
Boy, I'm—
Go ahead, whoever would like to make the motion.
I took the opportunity to second. The chair cannot make an emotion, but he can second.
Okay.
Did I?
No, you didn't, but go ahead if you'd like.
He was.
I move to approve the consent.
I apologize. I don't know why your name popped in there.
And here I said it's nice to have all—the commissioner knew—you know, to have the same commission we did last time, because things go a lot smoother.
Your computer is working with us.
I don't hear—I don't see the vote coming up either.
Well, you have to second.
I did.
He did, yeah. He did.
Okay, here it comes. And again, a unanimous vote. With that, we'll go into the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I want to point out—I got an email today from John Valley at U.S. Senator Jeff Merkley's office. They're going to be hosting a public town hall meeting with the senator at the Westland Adult Community Center at 1180 Rosemont Road in Westland on Wednesday, January 9th, between 4:30 and 5:30 p.m. So anyone interested in attending that, that's the schedule. Also—
I just might mention, I got a call from him extending that invitation, and I said that, well, I couldn't—I might not be able to be there, but our other commissioners invited. And he said, well, we generally don't extend to all the council members, because we'd have hundreds of people attending. That's all right. You can go. We can have our fine people there.
What day is it?
It is January 9th from 4:30 to 5:30 at the Westland Adult Community Center, 1180 Rosemont Road.
Kathy, if you can, is—yeah, thank you.
Also, the Third Annual Sight and Sound Celebration is occurring on January 20th, 2013. That's a Sunday from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Pioneer Center, right over here, a block from us. Tickets are available at www.2020event.org. And as you know, the city is sponsoring that, along with Alliance Club, and proceeds benefit kids in the community, so it's a nice event. I have it a little right up here. I'll pass around if anyone's interested in that. And then, some of you don't know this, but, gosh, it must have been a few months back, about four or five months ago, that a gentleman named Patrick Boland is interested in starting a triathlon, and he's calling it the Clackamas Cove Triathlon. And his tentative date for this triathlon is June 23rd, 2013. To put on a triathlon takes a lot of work from a volunteer or a number of volunteers, and he's got a team of people he's been working with to help him. But he's really the leading energy behind it, and he's had a couple of discussions with me, and we've tried to be very supportive. He sent an email out here, actually giving the city a lot of kudos to—for the help that he's received so far in trying to put this together. But that's the target date. He's looking for sponsorships, and has had some success in obtaining sponsorships, some from our local business community and others from larger vendors in Portland. And he's also going to be hitting, it looks like, a lot of Portland metro area, including the city of Portland, for, I think, sporting goods stores and other running stores and places that might be interested in sponsoring that event here in Oregon City. So those that are interested in learning more about that can contact Patrick Boland And then next, the annual financial audits for Oregon City and the Oregon City Urban and Rural District and South Fork Water Board have all been completed, and have been submitted to the State Audits Division, so we'll report back when we have the results of that. Also, Oregon City's comprehensive annual financial report has been submitted to the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program to the Government Finance Officers Association. We won that award last year, and we're going to try again this year. And then Rotary, for those of you who don't know what it is, your city manager is an active member, and I know many of you are in service clubs, so I'm not going to directly recruit you tonight, but if anybody wants to know more about Rotary, it's a great organization that has really undertaken positive change in the world, like so many others. So there's a very short thing about what is Rotary, and then another little flyer that has more information. I believe in asking busy people to get—to do things, and I know you're very busy, so I thought I would pass that around. And then Maureen Cole, our library director, wants to talk to you a little bit about—a reminder for Library's First Friday film coming up.
So I got in trouble last month by William Gifford for not reminding everybody that the Library's First Friday Film series, the third film, is this Friday. And I know it's a little right after holidays and everything else, but it's the first Friday. What could I do? And the film is Hot Coffee, which is a documentary about the woman who was burned by McDonald's coffee, which is why I did not announce it at Rotary today, because of some members there that work for McDonald's. But anyway, and how the media kind of got involved in that lawsuit and really twisted things around. And our—we will be serving coffee, but we promise it won't burn you. And our facilitator for after the movie is Vicky Yates, who has just absolutely the best experience of anybody I could think of, because she is an attorney who actually mediated many, many cases, and of course owns a coffee shop. So it's just perfect. So I hope that everybody comes, 6:30 this Friday at the Pioneer Center.
Thank you.
I'll just give a plug for it. I went to the last two, and there—you know, there's some good discussion that occurs after these movies. It's not just—well, I don't know if the movies are exactly entertaining. Well, the last one was in particularly an entertaining movie, I thought, but there's some great discussion that comes on afterwards. And I suggest it wasn't entertaining. It's—they're—what I meant is they're intended, I think, to be more thought-provoking than they are intended to be in entertainment, per se. And there's been some great discussion afterwards, and so I want to compliment you, and I think Nancy Wiseman of the senior centers have been there. They got kind of a dog and pony, the two of them do before the movie starts, which is a lot of fun. That is entertainment, incidentally. So it's great, and I strongly recommend that if you have that time and have nothing else to do that evening, or even if you do have something else to do, go ahead and cancel one and come to the movie. Yeah. Thank you.
That's our report for this evening.
Okay, very good. I've got appointments to make. We've been very successful in filling our committees, but we haven't filled them all. I'm appointing Douglas DeHart and reappointing Shaw Spady to the Natural Resource Committee with terms ending December 31st, 2015. Reappointing Laura Zettner and Autumn Rudisell, and the appointment of Robert Stoll to the Budget Committee with terms extending through December 31st, 2015. Reappointing Phoebe O'Leary to the Metro Enhancement Committee for a term extending to 2016. Appointing Jen—I think it's pronounced Croney—to the Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust for a term ending December 31st, 2016. The appointment of Daniel Millard to the Library Board for a term that extends to 2031—December 31st, 2016. Reappointing Charles Goodwell and appointing Tom Guile to the Planning Commission to a term extending to December 31st, 2016. And reappointing Bob Mahoney and Scott Pilminster to the Transportation Advisors Committee, term ending 2031—two—excuse me. December 21st, 2015. Now, having made those appointments, I do want to—I do want to mention something, and it may probably will require some bylaw changes, and we'll bring it up at a study session. To those that might not know it, we had set our goals to actually go to a biennial budgeting system. Our appointments on the Budget Committee, unfortunately, are three-year appointments. And what I would like to do is actually extend these appointments, if it's approved by us to the Budget Committee, to have the appointments that are made now, which are three-year appointments to four-year appointments, and then have the current ones that are as a one-year and two-year, and see if we can have the one-year to a two-year appointment, because I think it'd be very difficult to have new budget people coming in when, in fact, we're going to be on a two-year cycle. And I think it's to our benefit to have people complete the full two years, the two-year cycle. So that's something that's going to be coming forward to us for discussion.
I know that there's some Oregon statutes that control the Budget Committee, and I'm looking at White, who's giving me a nod. I think that may actually set by statute that Budget Committee member terms have to be certain lengths, so there may be some issues with it.
Yeah, that's correct, and I think that's what the mayor's trying to address. Thank you, Mayor. So by switching to a biennial budget, the statutes specifically indicate that we need four-year terms, so the mayor would like to shore that up, so we're all in alignment.
Okay, very good. We do—even though we've been very successful in recruiting, we do have openings that we're still trying to fill. One that should be a popular one, and we need the three positions to the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee. And the second one is the Transportation Advisory Committee, one year. Transportation Advisory Committee, of course, we are going through our transportation system plans, so this would be a great time to become a member of that. So those are the three openings—that four openings, excuse me, that we have on our advisory committees, and encourage citizens that are interested to apply for those positions. I will state that with the exception of the Budget Committee and the Enhancement Committees, my policy has been to have the respective boards do the interviewing and to make a recommendation to me. And in all cases, I have followed the recommendation of the respective advisory committees, except one threw me three-to-three vote on terms of who they were recommending, so I actually had to make an independent decision. The reason it's not possible to do it for the Budget and Metro Enhancement Committees, generally, they only meet one day, sometimes two, but it's very difficult to pull a committee in to make those kind of reviews. And so that's the process we go to. That's all I've got to say. Does anybody else have any reports? Hearing none?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, and we're not adjourned to executive meeting, we're just jay.
Yay!